Welcome back, everybody. I'm David Jackson alongside Omar Tomlinson, and we are delighted to have you here at the 2020 Watauga County Meet the Candidates Forum. Again, we have just finished our session for the U.S. House of Representatives. And again, we thank David Wilson Brown for being with us tonight. And again, a reminder to you, for those of you that might have tuned in late, wondered where Congresswoman Virginia Fox was, she's actually in session up in Washington right now, sent her regrets and also sent with her a three-and-a-half, almost four-minute video that you will be able to view in the archive of tonight's full entire scope of what we'll go through here this evening. It will be at the front end of the U.S. House of Representatives session. So make sure you go back and review that if you want to hear Congresswoman Fox's thoughts about what she can bring to the 5th District in another term. But again, we thank David Wilson Brown for being here. Omar, are you hungry yet?
I can deal with it.
I can hear his stomach growling over here. We're getting ready to move into the next session here of four sessions. And tonight, we're getting ready to move now into our group for the Watauga County Commissioners. Let's take a look at the schedule ahead of us here. Just so you are aware, Watauga County Commissioners come up next. That will get going here as close to 6:30 as we can get that to you. And then we'll have, following that, or as you can see, the order here, District 1 candidates Carrington Patalian, Todd Castle, District 2 John Welch, he is running unopposed, the incumbent there, and District 5 Charlie Wallen and Bart Keller. So again, that's the schedule coming up for Watauga County Commissioners. And I would say we'll get that started before 6:35. And we've got a lot to talk about here as we get into this group here this evening. One of the other things we want to make sure of, too, is that you remember the rules as they are given to this group before we get into candidate introductions. Let's go back over and make sure that you are aware of just how things will work. Questions will be asked of each candidate in a round robin format, each having the opportunity to answer first, but all will answer the same question. It'll look a little bit different for the county commissioners than it just looked like with one candidate here with us in person for the U.S. House situation here that we just went through. All questions will be asked by one of us, the moderators here, and each response will have a 90-second time limit, and each candidate will have a two-minute opening and closing statement. So again, those are the rules for our fun show here tonight, and hopefully you're able to keep that in mind as we go forward. Omar, we've got a great group of candidates here for Watauga County Commissioners, our largest group of the evening, five of them. So why don't you start with the introductions?
All right. Our first district race features Democrat Carrington Patalian. Patalian is a certified nurse, midwife at the Harmony Center for Women. She's a 2002 graduate of the Frontier School of Midwifery and Family Nursing. She has 25 years serving women and families in the high country, and owned her own small practice for seven years, serving as a women's health practitioner and certified nurse-midwife. Next is Republican Todd Castle. And I'm gonna have to pull that up here in just a second. I'll let David take care of that one.
Okay. Todd Castle is a Watauga County native, employed by Appalachian State University over the last 22 years, currently serving as a network technician for App State Information Technology Service, and serves as a member of the Watauga County Planning Board. So Todd Castle Carrington Patalian facing off in District 1. Omar, playing with your iPad over there, I love it.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, I'll take care of John Welch, and you can get ready for Charlie Wallen.
Well, I got you, I'm ready.
Well, you go ahead then.
Watauga County native John Welch is a 2001 graduate of Woodengee University, member of Watauga County Board of Commissioners since 2012, and previously served as Watauga County Board of Education. He serves as Associate A.D. for Internal Operations at App State Athletics Department.
Excellent. Now, let's talk about the District 5 race for Watauga County Commissioner, the incumbent Democrat Charlie Wallen. Charlie, a 1994 graduate of Appalachian State with a bachelor's degree in political science, 30-year resident of the high country, 21-year employee at Appalachian State, serving as Assistant Director of Campus Dining, and is a member of the Watauga County Board of Commissioners, currently as the incumbent, where he has served since 2018 in that role. So welcome Charlie Wallen, and also welcome to Bart Keller here, joining us here this evening, another longtime native of Watauga County. Bart Keller, not only a native, but a graduate of Watauga High School back in 1995. He's been a 24-year employee of Critcher Brothers Produce. He's a local cattle farmer and serves as a volunteer host of the Junior SRA Rodeo in Deep Gap. So again, we have got an established group here this evening, and we welcome you all, candidates for Watauga County Commissioner here tonight.
And at this time, we'd like to remind you again of the rules. Questions will be asked of all the candidates in a round robin format. In fairness to everyone, all candidates will address the same question. There will be a 90-second time limit for responses and a two-minute opening and closing statement from each candidate. Our timekeeper tonight, of course, is Tracy Royster, former Boone Area Chamber of Commerce Board Chair, and she will indicate time limits. So I guess what we need to do is begin the race here with, first of all, Bart Keller.
Two-minute opening coming.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As David said, I'm a 1995 graduate of Watauga High School, and here in the county, I'm a seventh generation down through the Critcher family, farmer here locally. And I've worked with my family with a multitude of things, with running a small business. You do everything from tending to livestock to growing Christmas trees and the transportation side of it, we're moving Christmas trees around and produce and cattle. And so the management aspect, so I understand what it's all about, to keep a small business moving forward and to have a lot of long hours involved in the commitment that it takes to get that going. So I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve as county commissioner and looking forward to this race.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Charlie Wallen, two-minute opening statement.
Yes, I'm Charlie Wallen, and I am a current Watauga County Commissioner, and I have been for the last two years. And I have, as said, I've lived here for 30 years, and I have been involved very heavily locally with many different things. I have currently the Assistant Director of Campus Dining at Appalachian State, which I've been doing for the past 21 years. Before that, I ran the Pizza Hudson Town, for those of you that remember it. I ran the delivery and the restaurant for nine years before that. So I've got a lot of experience in both the private and the public sector working. I've also been active over the years, as I've served for eight years on the Planning Commission for Watauga County. And I served also on the plan to rewrite Watauga County for the Strategic Plan, the Citizens Plan for Watauga County. I was the chair of that when it was rewritten back in 2010, and which is the still plan that's still in existence and in use today. I have served my community on many nonprofits, from Oasis to Hospitality House to Whammy, and I have done work with my church for many years. I am currently on the council. I just finished a two-year term as President of the Council at the Church at Grace Lutheran. I have a beautiful wife and a 12-year-old daughter, Keller, who is in school at Parkway Elementary. So I am heavily involved in the school system as well. And I have many liaison positions on the board, which has built a lot of trust over the years, so.
Up next is the Democratic incumbent John Welch of the 2nd District.
Well, first off, thanks to everyone who's tuning in. Thank you to both chambers for putting this event on. This is my fourth time doing this. And you got me away from the TV watching my White Sox blow Game 3 against the A's today, so appreciate that. And thanks for all my friends up here who are running for office. It's not an easy thing to put yourself out there in the public and run for office, especially during a pandemic. So I really appreciate the fact that we have some folks who are willing to put themselves out there. And these are all good folks. And we're very lucky in Watauga County to have civic-minded people that are willing to put themselves out there. So I really appreciate it. And thanks to App TV for broadcasting this out. It's kind of weird looking out to an empty audience. But I am a Watauga County native, born and raised here, product of Watauga County Schools, went to Blowing Rock Elementary, Watauga High School, went on to Woodengee University and got a degree there and a master's from United States Sports Academy and an EDS from App State. So I do consider myself an App State grad. And I've been working in the Athletics Department for the last almost 20 years, 2001 when I got back. The last 10 years, hard to believe it's been 10, but in 2010, I was elected to the Watauga County School Board. And then I've had the honor of serving on the Watauga County Commission since 2012. And it's been a true honor to represent the folks of my home county, and look forward to doing, hopefully, at least two, four, however many years in some capacity, serving the people of this great county.
Todd Castle, you are next with your two-minute opening statement.
Okay. Thank you also, as John said, to the chambers and to App TV and getting this information out there. So we appreciate all the logistics of getting everybody's answers and all through email and not face-to-face. So thank you, guys, for doing this, for this opportunity to get us out there to see who we are. David mentioned in the brief bio that I'm employed by Appalachian State University. I've been there for 22 years in the network side of the infrastructure group at IT. And prior to work at App State, I was employed by Samaritan's Purse. And so my degree is actually as a biomedical equipment technician. So I served overseas with Samaritan's Purse, and part of the reason that I'm at App State was just the travel part of it. We were starting a family, and so I made a decision to leave that part of it, traveling so much. And I still have many friends over there, but App State's been good for me, and it's been solid. And I'm always home at night, so that's a good thing. So I have been married to my wife, Anissa, for 27 years, and deeply rooted in the community as well, the Critchers. So they're notorious. I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing. It's Bart down there smiling because he's a Critcher as well. And we have two sons who I'm thrilled chose Appalachian State University for their education. And I'm proud of that because you just get to have your children at home, so that's great. So working on the Planning Board for the past eight years has been a pleasure, and it's been eye-opening. I've learned a lot, and I think that that's one of the things that enables me to perhaps do the job as county commissioner.
And the challenger to Mr. Castle is Democrat Carrington Patalian.
Hi. Yes, I am Carrington Patalian and am running for a seat on the county commission. My family roots run deep here, too, and go back many generations. I spent my childhood and my young adulthood here in Boone. I went to Hardin Park and Watauga High School while my mother was working on her college degree in education at ASU, as did her mother and father before her. In 1993, my husband John and I moved back to Watauga County to raise our daughter Hannah, in the only place I can imagine raising a family. Since then, I have served my community as a public health nurse and as a certified nurse-midwife. I did own a private practice for seven years, and I have the honor of being the first certified nurse-midwife to deliver babies at Watauga Medical Center. In all, I have delivered over 1,500 children in this community and continue to work in women's healthcare today. As a healthcare professional and leader in my community, I think I know the values of listening to people, reviewing options for solutions, developing plans to achieve goals that are beneficial and solve problems as they are presented. I value my ability to help families, to help others, and I feel great responsibility caring for the families in Watauga County and the high country. This is a community to be proud of and to safeguard for the future. I believe we should strive to work together across party lines, economic lines, social lines. I know that we can accomplish more by listening to one another, finding common ground, sharing our talents and resources to find solutions. My campaign platform is on these three areas: families, education, and sustainability. Each of these have many focal points, some of which will surely be addressed tonight. I'm interested in every aspect of our county commission. I have much to learn. I know that I'll be able to offer my experiences, my education, dedication, and the love of this community to serve Watauga County as one of your county commissions.
Thank you very much for all of your opening comments here. And one quick point of clarification before we get started, I do want to let you know that Tracy Royster is not a third-base coach, okay? She's giving you all kinds of signals over there, but she's not trying to tell you to lay down the drag bunt. She is giving you your time cues tonight. So if you get the closed fist, that means 30 seconds. If you get the hand up, that means you're coming close to your 90 seconds. And if you go over the 90 seconds, she will call time, okay? Of all of the submissions that we got for questions tonight for all of our different groups, this one was the most popular. So we've got a lot to talk to you about tonight, and we'll want to go ahead and get right to that. So with that said, Carrington Patalian, you get the first question, and then we'll move down the line with the first question as we've done before, okay?
Okay.
The first question tonight is, what do you view as the county's top funding priorities over the next two to four years?
So I think one of the funding priorities would be to look at the county as a whole and what projects are already in place, and which ones we need to move forward on, and which ones can maybe hold a backseat. There are lots of things out there in the world that I've been listening to. There's an ambulance question, there's a parking deck question, and I'm sure we'll probably get close to one of those questions again tonight because those are very popular. Supporting small businesses' infrastructure, I think, is really important. In this time of COVID, I have seen where lots of people are working from home now, and I think that we should be attracting those families to come and move to this community. I saw the video yesterday about the Boone Underground that's just opened, which is a great step in the right direction. So I think supporting those families that want to live here in our community is of high importance, and everything that comes up between now and then. Thank you.
Mr. Castle.
I agree with most of the statements because we need infrastructure in the county. That's one of the things that I've mentioned in a couple of articles, is a growing population brings about growing needs. And one of those needs would be ambulance spaces. If you live in eastern or western far ends of the county, an ambulance base that's close proximity to your home could cut a response time by 15 or 20 minutes. So I think those are critically important. We also have an aging community, so again, just as important. Infrastructure is probably our top priority. You know, the ambulance bases, making sure our fire departments have the resources that they need, and also supporting law enforcement. Because, again, with a growing community, we need to be able to protect those citizens. And so I think we need to make sure that the law enforcement has the means to cover the areas. Some of the communications that we use, two-way radios, they cut out, and so there's some dead spots. We need to invest in that as well.
Mr. Welch.
Well, I think, and my top priority ever since I ran for a school board almost 10 years ago has been education. And I'm not just talking about K-8, K-12. This is early childhood education development. This is pre-K-12, and also the community college, which we have, the last few years, funded to levels that have put them in a position to really thrive. We were able to begin building a fund for the elementary schools and high school, the Watauga County Schools facilities, to really start addressing those needs that we see in those facilities that have been kind of neglected since the last economic downturn. And we're working towards building a brand-new Valley Crusus school, which has long been an issue. But education, for me, has always been a top priority. Also, public safety. As Todd mentioned, ambulance service has been a big thing. And since I've been on the board, we have expanded ambulance services three times, with another one coming online in January. Prior to that, it hadn't been expanded since 2001. So we're looking at the public safety, law enforcement, communications to really touch everyone in Watauga County. And of course, in the middle of a pandemic, what can we say about public health that everybody else hasn't already, and really address some of the needs for the public health here in Watauga County?
Mr. Wallen.
Yes, I concur with Chairman Welch. We do have, education is a huge priority and a huge funding issue going down the road. We are looking at $20 million alone in infrastructure in other schools. John mentioned building a new Valley Crusus, but in addition to that, there's $20 million at least in infrastructure needs that we, at all the other schools, from HVAC to boilers to new roofs to paving. There's all kinds of building and facilities needs that were neglected for about eight years that we're now having to try to figure out how to recoup and try to get back on track. So education is huge, as been mentioned. Public safety is another huge thing. Ambulance bases, we've got to do better about how we can expand all of our ambulance bases. I mean, it's a $303,000 hit every time we add one. And so, you know, we've got to plan over the next five years. How can we do better in Blowing Rock? How can we do better in District 5, which I represent, on the eastern side of the county, because its times are hard over there. Sheriff's Department is huge as well. We increased their budget $45,000 this year. So I don't know if people might think that, you know, their sheriff office doesn't get their fair share. They got $45,000 extra in the middle of a pandemic this year. So we also want to take care of the fire departments as well and take care of them. And broadband is huge. We have to invest in broadband and make sure that our infrastructure is getting up to speed there because we can't attract business without it.
Mr. Keller.
I agree with all the statements so far. And in fact, my number-one point was going to be broadband. For that was, I live next to Blue Ridge Parkway in Deep Gap, and I know that's a real issue down there, that when you get on the east side of the Parkway, all across the county down through there, there's real issues for Charter and/or AT&amp;T to not be able to take a line under or over the Parkway without huge red tape to get through. So I think that's something we need to really address, because what's been brought to my attention is the teachers are struggling with the students in a remote learning setting, even being able to get good connection with their students. So either it's getting the lessons to them, or the students not being able to connect has just created a real issue. So our teachers' workload has increased due to that alone. So I mean, there's a lot of issues. There's no question about the ambulance service is not only important on the east end of the county, but the west end, too, because it's even more remote on that end of the county. But it seems to be that there's more growth as far as houses that are going over and add in, really even there is down the 421 corridor towards Deep Gap. So all those are great points. I agree with every one of them. But those are things that we're not going to have, we're not going to be able to just keep putting the Band-Aid on the fix. We're going to have to address those situations fairly quickly coming up, especially with the schools and making repairs to HVAC and the roof situation with leaks and continuing on the Valley Crusus, so.
When I first came to Watauga County in 1991, I was the manager of WATA, our broadcast partner here, for this program. And I remember, we used to joke about the Parkway being the Boone bypass. And since that time, we've had the four-laning of 421, four-laning of 321, and the road projects have been really interesting. What is your particular suggestion or priorities for the county's involvement for the next submission of projects to the NCDOT State Transportation Improvement Plan? And I'll start off now with Mr. Castle.
Starting with me. Like you just said, over the last few years, and we can all remember it because we've all been here, you can remember 321 coming up, Curvy Mountains, and two lanes, and 421 the same way. We've four-laned into a bottleneck. So we have good wide roads, and we still come into the city limits on both sides of town, and everything just narrows back down. And I would like to see, and I don't really know, this has been talked about for many, many years around here, this bypass. Can't remember what the name of it was, but a bypass around Boone, however, nobody comes to go around Boone. They come to Boone to come to Boone. They come to ballgames and to ski and to leaf-look and to drive the Parkway, which was our morning commute, who gets to drive on a federal highway every morning to go to school. But I do think we need to talk about perhaps the ability to get some sort of a bypass around town where people could, if they were passing through, to get around.
Okay. Chairman Welch.
Well, what's interesting about the way county government is set up in North Carolina is that counties have no influence whatsoever on road infrastructure. It's all the state, DOT, and the municipalities. So basically, each year, we do an exercise at one of our meetings led by Joe Furman, where they give us a list of projects throughout the county that we go ahead and prioritize and send on to DOT to be scored. And so there may be some projects that score higher than others, and then there may be some that don't. And so even if they score high, it doesn't mean there's money at the state level to be able to fund these projects. So we've seen, in my eight years on the county commission, I've seen some of the same projects over and over coming up on our scoring sheets. But what we have sent through that has been approved is a widening of 105 going out to Clark's Creek, down 421 towards Skate World, Bamboo Drive, Bamboo Road with some sidewalks. I probably get more questions about roads and highways than I do about any other question as a county commissioner. And what we try to do is, we try to find those areas and those projects that are the most impactful for this entire county, knowing that it's a growing county, that we're getting a lot of visitors, the university's growing, that really help take some of the pressure off of some of these bottlenecked areas, like Todd said.
Mr. Wallen.
I, to piggyback on what Chairman Welch just said, we do also work, as Joe Furman of their Planning Department brings us all these projects, one of his researches, he goes and talks to the town of Boone, talks to the town of Blowing Rock, and we make sure that we don't do the same projects, because we all get to submit our own projects. So, you know, we look at what they're doing so that we don't duplicate anything. So there's a lot of intergovernmental communication, which I think is critical, so that we can maximize the amount of points we can levy against some of these projects. And as Chairman Welch said, 421 to Vilas was huge to get on there. 105 to Banner Elk, you know, that's on, that's off, that's on, that's off. There's funding, you know, that's huge. The bamboo 421, as he pointed out, the sidewalk project around through there and to connect to Wilson's Ridge, and that whole widening to try to make that a safer place for everybody, and open up some economic development through there has been huge. So we have a lot of projects that we hope that DOT can fund. And right now, as pointed out, there's not a lot of funding in DOT. I've got people that call me daily about Sampson Road, where they just walked off from the project down there because they don't have any funding. And there's a huge need down through there, back to fire, rescue, police. You can't get down through there without, it's just so beat up down through there right now. So there's a lot of projects, in addition to these big projects, that we need to keep advocating for. And there's just not a lot of funding, and we need to get the funding.
Mr. Keller.
I completely agree with what you're talking about. That's an issue that unfortunately the county commissioners don't have that much influence in what goes on with state-funded roads. But we need to go down every avenue we can to petition them to help us out, because there's no question with the growth at App State, getting to the 20,000 student mark and the explosion of dorms and apartments being built around Town of Boone, you can only put so many in a small area. So that growth's going to have to go outside of the city limits for it to be able to continue to go. Because if not, where are you going to start parking all the cars on top of each other? I mean, something's got to happen. So there's, even if it's not something major, as far as a big, major project like 421 was, we've got to try to address something, 194 out past Hardin Park School and get on out towards Howard's Creek or Meekham Road out through that area to help with that. Because what's going to hurt us now is 221 being four-lane. That Ash County employees and Wilkes County employees, man, they're able to fly right into Boone, and that creates the bottleneck that Todd is referring to. So whatever we can do to petition them to help on that end, and then, of course, push on with 105 on the other end, that's going to be big. I mean, that down to Boone Parkway that's proposed is a big project, and I think it's something that would help this town, because with all the exits that are going to come off of, people know if they get to a certain point, they don't have to drive through so many stoplights to make it bottleneck more. So we need to really get our point across to the DOT that this is important for Town of Boone, if we're going to continue to grow the way we are with the university.
Ms. Patalian.
Hi. So roads and funding roads are probably not my forte as a healthcare provider. But in listening to everybody that's here today, I've heard a lot about the bamboo-Wilson's Ridge Road and the turnaround that's supposed to be near where Todd and I live, which I think is very important, because there's so many close accidents that I see every every day. I drive that road, and it always makes me nervous getting through there. I think that continuing the communication that the county commissioners are doing with the state is is paramount. And also making sure that we're looking at the environmental impact of expansion of roads in our community because we are seeing a lot more concrete than I remember as a child. So, I think that with the DOT and the state funding being load right lower right now and difficult to to come about and have earmarked for our community, I think we need to keep pushing with the plans and the needs that we have. I also agree with Bart with the building that's going on right on the streets of Boone and all over our town with, you know, 500 capacity buildings on a two lane road near Harris Teeter. I'm concerned about traffic there. My mother lives at Bryan Estates, and I'm there every day, and it's already difficult to get in and out of there. So, I think we're doing I think we're doing the best that we can. Our county commissioners are working really hard, and that we just need to continue to keep that communication open and try to get that financial aid that we need to improve our roads in our county.
Chairman Welch, this next question starts with you. What is your understanding of the effects of adverse childhood experiences and toxic stress on early childhood development? And what policy solutions would you propose to help prevent or reduce the effects of ACEs on Watauga County children?
Well, and and, you know, we're really lucky in Watauga County that we have some nonprofits and and other organizations that really key on early childhood development. And I think it's a testament to this county how the used to be the state of the child, as it was called, has grown into such an amazing event that has really put a spotlight on early childhood development and and the the issues that early childhood trauma can can cause on kids as they they develop. Crystal Kelly, who is an absolute amazing advocate for early childhood development, we're we're extremely lucky to have her. She was able to write a grant with the Pritzker Foundation to to bring in some private federal funds into Watauga County to really develop the infrastructure for early childhood development here in Watauga County. And and she is she's grown the Children's Council and and really taken this Pritzker Foundation project and really ran with it. It's 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 important for people to realize that as a county commissioner, you know, when you talk about education funding, that they think it's pre-K 12 or even community college. But what studies have shown is that you really need to start investing in early childhood education at an earlier age before they get to pre-K so that you're building a foundation for those kids to be able to thrive in a school environment. And that includes not just in the educational environment, but taking away all the traumas that they may see that may have a major impact on their early early development and maturity. So, it's really important to to take as much of the traumas away as possible early on and and basically giving our early childhood development groups the tools to be able to develop those those children early on.
Mr. Wellin?
To echo what Chairman Welch just talked about with the grant funding that we were that Crystal was able to get, you know, it's been nationally. I mean, we're not talking about just the state of North Carolina or the region. It has been nationally recognized for what we've been able to do with childhood childcare development and what we're trying to do to help make sure that that children have a an advantage and a leg up from the start and from birth all the way up till they start school and into the pre-K programs. It's so critical to make sure that they're getting everything they need, to make sure that there's adequate daycare for all of them. So, and to make sure that there's people going into these homes and working with these parents to make sure that a lot of these trauma issues that might pop up, don't pop up and by giving these these children an advantage. And they've also worked with this grant funding to also do a lot to help certify a lot more daycares in this area. They could do a lot more, and that's a real funding issue that we're going to have to help help support is to try to get them more funding so that they can do more for the for the daycares to get them up to the certain levels that they need. We'd love to see all of our daycare centers to be five star. And so, I think that is really critical right now to help try to promote everything that they're doing at the Children's Council, to do everything that we can that that's offshoot from that, like the Children's Playhouse that gives children an opportunity to come and gather and parents a place to gather and just to talk about issues with their children and how to how to move forward with all those. So, we have to just continue to invest in those early, early years and not just focus on a child once they get to school because we've found that those are really critical in the shaping of the of a child.
Mr. Keller?
You can repeat the question. I didn't hear exactly what program you're talking about.
Sure. So, I'll I'll repeat the full thing. What is your understanding of the effects of adverse childhood experiences and toxic stress on early childhood development? And what policy solutions would you propose to help prevent or reduce the effects of ACEs trauma situations on Watauga County children?
That's something I'm really familiar with. I've never heard of the ACEs program before, but but there is no question about it that the children are the future of our county, and we got to do everything we can to help protect them in any any manner or form. I mean, so the funding is an issue, and I look forward to learning about this and seeing what it is that the county commissioners can do to help that situation down the road. But as far as knowing the details, I'm not familiar with that.
Ms. Bertallion?
Being in healthcare as a certified nurse midwife, I am very much aware of Crystal Kelly's work. I know Crystal well. I think continued funding for her projects is paramount. I believe that the early childhood development that we have in the community is good. It can always be better. ASU has a degree in early childhood development. They have the Lucy Brock School. But I believe that this starts before a child is even born. So, we do a lot of work at our my employment where we are working with women and prescreening women and their families and their partners and where they live to see what kind of environment that child is going home to when it's born. And I think that's a it starts in the womb, so to speak, and continues to throughout adult young adulthood. So, I think that the county commission has done a wonderful job supporting the Children's Council. And I think that having a policy where we are also supporting any of the nonprofits that are in our area and that we rely on the great educators that we have at App State, that there that this degree, the early childhood development, we have some great educators that should be part of some of the committees that we have for this.
Mr. Castle?
I'll admit it along with Bart, that I'm not as familiar with this with this subject as I should be. However, I would like to find out more about it. But the preservation of the family unit is so critical for young children. We were fortunate to be able to have, you know, our daycare provider per se was was my mother-in-law, and the nurturing and safe environment was was comforting when you left for work because both parents and a lot of family homes have to work. And then my father-in-law became ill and was in his last few months, my mother-in-law needed to give her full attention to him. And we were able to get our oldest son in at Appalachian's preschool or the daycare there. And I felt comfortable leaving him there. So, I do agree that I think we've got some awesome childcare development centers and early preschool. It's I don't think our elementary schools had always had the preschool, you know, in the years. So, I think that's a good thing. Like I said, supporting, she said something, Ms. Bertallion said something, is so critical. Making sure when that child goes home, or even when the mother becomes pregnant, to making sure that that family structure is as safe and as sound as it needs to be to protect that child.
All right. We'll go to a new question with Mr. Wellin kicking things off. Ash County, Wilkes County, Burke County, Burke County, and Caldwell Counties have all announced major economic development projects or incentive packages over the last few years. What is the next major investment that Watauga County could make that would make a lasting impact on the growth of our community?
I feel like that one of the things that we need to do is to is back to the broadband issue. Until we can solve some of the broadband issues, we're going to have to, we have to have that in place to attract businesses and families, and especially down that 421 corridor where we've already been talking is is very inadequate in what we've got. So, we need to try to do all we can to help improve that. And in turn, doing that, it'll help attract families and businesses that want to move here, and they'll want to invest and make businesses grow and thrive, especially small businesses. I think that we really have to focus our energies along all the businesses that we've got, you know, and seeing what our niche is. And, you know, we need businesses here that don't rely on major transportation, like an interstate highway just that you can jump on and and go with, you know, or an airport or something like that. We've got there's businesses that we can attract to this area that can benefit the area and benefit the surrounding area in bringing in new jobs to the area. And I think it's going to be on a smaller basis, not the huge manufacturing jobs we've seen in the past as much. But, you know, stuff like ECR, who is who has grown exponentially here. And we've got many breweries now that are growing exponentially and shipping their products out. And we've got a lot of technology businesses, other technology businesses that are starting to spring up. And a lot of that is what's going to be our future and attracting some of these businesses. And but the big thing is we've got to solve this broadband issue in parts of our county to start with.
Mr. Keller?
As I spoke earlier, broadband is an issue we need to address. But as far as the long-term development, I mean, there's there's no question Watauga County has always been a tourist-type town, even from when I was born as a child. It's a I can always remember between Apiski Mountain and Grandfather Mountain and the Blowing Rock and and all the things that are here. People just come to the mountains because they love the cool air in the summers and the snow in the winter that they can get out and play. And so, we need to continue to 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 look at helping the smaller businesses that are have become so popular. You know, there's a lot of farm-to-to-table projects that are going on in the in the state. And Western North Carolina being a tourist area here in Watauga County, we need to do what we can to help those smaller businesses down the road after we address some of the other critical things that have got to be took care of. But as far as looking at a long-term plan, those are things that we can help, not only the ones that are already here in business, to help them be able to grow, but to to attract others to come. It's like Charlie said, we're we're not an area that's going to attract a major manufacturing deal. But there are some small industry businesses that here in COVID that were able to switch gears on what they were doing to help with masks and respirators and those situations like that. So, it's not like we're looking for huge industrial situations to take place. You know, it's more of a of a family-oriented recreation attraction where it's all a fun weekend for people to come in and stay. So.
Ms. Bertallion?
So, I agree with everything that this gentleman has spoken to so far. I support local businesses here, especially owned by local people, our farms and our partnerships that the county commission has with the Economic Development Commission. I think our local businesses are some of the finest that we have for our community and for the visitors that come to the high country. I would like to see us attract high-tech business with low footprints. So, to be a community where families can come and live, like we spoke before, these people who are learning to work from home. To do this, we must have affordable workforce housing. We need co-working spaces like Boone Underground, which has started, available childcare and senior care, too, and excellent schools and higher education, and preserving the natural resources that these beautiful mountains and and give us to live in, to play in. I think our we have to maintain our excellent education programs to attract these small companies and families. And to do that, we really need to support our teachers with fair wages and ample resources and improve our schools' structures.
Mr. Castle?
We, when you meet someone on the street and they say they're new to the area, you automatically say, so do you work for the college or Samaritan Spurstra or ASU or the hospital? You've got three major employers. And the rest are significantly small, family-owned businesses that are just making a living. And I would love to see Watauga County get behind those small businesses with emphasis on supporting those businesses with our with our money. I will tend to frequent a business that I know the owner. I want to spend my money there. We're not going to have a problem getting people to want to come here. They already do. People want to live in this in this environment, and can you blame them? You know, the best schools in the state and and but Ms. Bertallion touched on a good point. She said, our wages, we've got to get those up. In the mountains, we don't typically have as much and as good a wages as other places off the state. And then our cost of living is so much higher here. And so, supporting small independently-owned businesses with our own money and making sure that there's extra emphasis on those businesses that people can showcase, I think is important.
Chairman Welch?
Well, there's a lot that that we can do and that we have done to attract small businesses, retain small businesses, and help them get through this pandemic. You know, we we we're lucky to have one of the lower tax rates in the state. I think we're in the bottom five out of 100 counties. We partnered with the the EDC and the Chamber of Commerce in in starting the Re-Energize Watauga Fund to provide loans to small businesses who are having a lot of troubles getting through the pandemic. I think seeing the the commitment of the county commission, the EDC chambers in developing a fund such as that is eye-opening to all these businesses that are outside of our community looking for a place to move to. Strong public education, pre-K, early childhood, pre-K 12, and community college, making sure the community college is is a strong component of this community to train employees, public safety, public health, working with the state to try to loosen up some of the the roadblocks we see in in expanding broadband to the county. I think these are all a part of an economic development package that we've been working on in Watauga County over the last few years. And if there's one thing the pandemic has shown us is that a lot of the businesses can rethink the way that they operate. And a lot of folks know that you don't have to be sitting in an office to thrive as a business. So, making this developing a quality of life and 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 a place to live for these businesses to relocate and be able to thrive is is really key for us.
On to our next question. There has been significant discussion in the last few months regarding EMS coverage in areas outside of Boone and its impact on response times for providing services to families and businesses. What will you prioritize in working to provide adequate and equitable EMS coverage to all areas of Watauga County? Mr. Keller, we're starting with you.
I would like to see a study by the calls that have come in of where where they seem to be the longest response time. Obviously, from the western end of the county, the ambulances are stationed closest to the hospital. So, with a heavy traffic situation, it would easily add 15 to 20 minutes just to get through the other side of town before they can respond to wherever the call is. So, I think we need to prioritize which one needs it first and in which which area. And then, not only look at just putting one, but I'd be interested in looking at an ambulance station somewhere in the western end of the county, whether it be in the Cove Creek-Zionville area or even further out, if it if we needed to, to make the response time better. I would certainly entertain the idea of put one at the Deep Gap Fire Department in that area and on so that would get the eastern end of 421 to where you can branch off quicker on Harden Road or out 221 or down into Lower Stony Fork or any of those areas. And then the communication side of it, the tower situation was what's been brought to my attention as being the biggest problem. Even when they get in those areas to respond, they're losing communication back. So, they're having to use their personal cell phone to even continue to help with direction to get to where the the urgent call is. So, I those are those are two important things that really need to be addressed in the in the near future.
Ms. Bertallion?
So, as a healthcare provider, of course, I support expansion of emergency services. I have had many phone calls from people that on either end of the county that are, oh, I'm my contractions, my contractions. So, as a county commissioner, I do know that fiscal responsibility and doing the research that Bart was talking about to determine the areas where the need is greatest is the first step. We could also look at other options such as Rescue Incorporated, which is a local EMS and paramedic nonprofit service in Vermont where my brother lived. This type of option would probably and and really be a good fit for a rural community like ours. It is now has six different sites in there, a small town that's about the same size as Boone. The EMS services, the firefighter services, my father and my brother were both volunteer firemen. So, you know, I grew up in fire stations washing the tires of fire trucks. And I think our local firefighters and our EMS providers are some of the best we have in this in the state and and our law enforcement as well. So, I think that we have to support all of those areas, our ambulance service, our local firefighters, our EMS providers, and our law enforcement agency, and give them the tools that they need to help us as a community.
Mr. Castle?
I had some conversations with local, you know, fire and rescue, a Blowing Rock City Council person as well. Council person as well. They were excited about the base there. But I do believe that that is one of our biggest concerns is, and Bart brought up a good point, if we can get some data on our calls, you know, who's, where are we receiving the most calls? One thing that was alarming to me was also about a communication issue. Just because of the terrain where we live, two-way radios do not necessarily reach through all these valleys. And so, we need to get the communications up as well. We can dispatch, but if we can't dispatch back what the needs are, you know, whether or not we need to launch, you know, wings or one of the other air rescue services. So certainly exploring where the top priority, because of course, these are very expensive. I think Watauga County only owns two bases. They physically own. The other ones are leased. So we're going to have to invest in some infrastructure to actually build bases as well.
Chairman Welch.
Well, this is something I mentioned in the opening. We, we're behind. And, and over the last four or five years, our board has prioritized expanding ambulance service. As I mentioned, we, we added the base out on the western end across from Skate World and added three more crews since then. And prior to that, the ambulance service had remained stagnant since 2001, 2002. So we've recognized that with the growing university, growing population, a lot more visitors to the area, a lot more experienced folks living up here. I won't say old, but you know, it's just one of those deals that we, we find ourselves in. And, and so we, we have, we did a study in 2017 and understand that's just a snapshot in time. And so each year, the data changes. So we can do a study each year and, and the numbers change. And we've got a really good relationship with Watauga Medics. All their data, their call logs, everything, their response times are available for anyone's viewing. But we have to look at public safety EMS as a priority like we have the last few years and find a way to bring the response times down by adding crews and, and touching a lot more people in, in our county. It's, it's critical. And like I said, we, we've prioritized this over the last few years and will continue to do that.
Mr. Wallen.
Yes, this is, this is a critical issue going forward. And as we've talked about, funding is going to be a big need as we go forward. And we need to be looking now at buying, at buying land to put new bases up because, you know, land is not getting any cheaper. And as we've also said, you know, it's $303,000 just to add another crew to this, to the whole network. And we've done studies, as, as Chairman Welch has said, 2017 was the last study, but there's also ongoing studies all the time. And we can pull data anytime we want it and look at it. I do know that there's improvements that can be made. There's a, there's a idea out there about the 90 and 9 that I have set with many leaders in Blowing Rock and talked to them about, and that has one national standard. We've actually, in Watauga County, have gone to a 10-minute time, which is responding to calls within 10 minutes. But I think you're going to have to blend the two. I think that there's going to have to be concessions made on both sides. You know, yes, while getting under 10 minutes may be perfect in some areas, but that means there's one-minute calls here, but there could be a 45-minute call out in the middle of meat camp. So we've got to figure out how we can mold these two things together and work with them to help get better coverage in Blowing Rock, especially during the times of year when they have a, their, their population just explodes. And out in our area, down in District 5, the meat camp, Stony Fork, all of those areas, I've told my wife, she might as well just put me in the car and drive me because by the time anybody gets to me, I'll be a goner. So, you know, you know, these are critical things that we need to think about as we, as we go forward and plan the next five years.
We have enough questions here for two hours.
We didn't make the fire truck go by. Did y'all hear that? We started talking about this and Simon went, "Yeah." We didn't do that.
We have seen fees and charges for landfill use and other services like perk tests increase over the last few years. We will also see the county move through a property reevaluation in 21, 22, where based on current real estate market, it's safe to assume property values could see an increase. What are your priorities as it relates to allocating these additional revenue streams? How will you communicate with businesses in the area to ensure that they have adequate time to plan for these increases in taxes and fees? And Ms. Batalian, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I'll always start with me with something that I'm not really familiar with. That is an area that I would have to really educate myself a lot on. I do know that property values are increasing, which may be good for some, but it's really difficult for people who can't afford the value of homes. At this time right now, I'm hearing from people in my, in my community, that people from outside of our town are buying homes in pieces of property site unseen. They don't even make it on the market. So people that live here that are looking to upgrade or to move into a larger space don't really have an option to do that. So I think that that's not going to change. We have a beautiful place. People want to be here. And that is going to drive our property values up. So as far as the relationship between, you know, taxes in the town and property values, that's definitely something I'm going to have to defer to some of the other gentlemen that have been here and look at pretty closely in the future.
Mr. Castle.
You stepped on a hot-button topic for me and many others who take our trash to the landfill on Saturdays. You know, you go take your trash to the green boxes and you couldn't get to the green boxes because the cars were all the way out to Highway 421 because the landfill site enacted another, I guess, a new rule where you could only dump landfill materials on Saturdays towards your 2,000-pound tonnage. That's been a very, very, very unpopular decision. So, you know, if you dump during the week, you have to pay. My dad found that out the hard way. Paid $11 to dump a load of leaves on a Wednesday, and he wasn't aware of the new rule. And eventually, may do away with that tonnage that you have the 2,000-pound allotment for your property. And so, I understand that it's expensive to run a landfill and it's expensive to, to ship that stuff out of there. But they need to rethink that. Property reevaluations are inevitable. Like, like Ms. Batalian said, there's people coming into the community and they're buying site unseen. I have several real estate friends who said, you know, people are buying land, they don't even know, they haven't even laid eyes on it. So I think it is inevitable that we will see during the next evaluation that our values on our properties are going to go up. And hopefully, if you're a seller, it's a great thing. But if you're planning on staying in your home like I am, it may not be as good. But I think it's inevitable.
Chairman Welch.
Well, I, I think the theme coming out of this pandemic, or if we're ever out of this in the next year or so, is communication. And especially from government bodies. Because even though we're going through a revale, even though we're looking at expanded fees and you mentioned the landfill, this is another area that, that we're actually examining now that's been neglected for many, many years. And it's a facility that quite honestly can't keep up with the growing county that we have. So we're looking at some efficiencies and, and a whole rework of the operations and the facilities out there. But I think we, we have to temper what happens down the road with what we do as, as a governing body and make sure that we're not causing too much harm on the folks that are property owners, small business owners in the, in the county. It's, it's, it's hard to say where we're going to be by the next revale. And so, we're going to have to, as a county commission, whoever's on the board at the time, is, is take a balanced look at what the impacts are on everybody, taxpayers, visitors, whoever, small business owners, and what that looks like for the county. Because even though we may be getting extra revenue, as, as you mentioned in your question, it, it may behoove us to leave some of the back for people to make sure that they're recovering and getting out of the pandemic a little easier than what they normally would.
Mr. Wallen.
I'll echo what Chairman Welch said. We've been looking at a lot of these, these issues already. And the fee structures, especially out at the landfill site, as being, and I go by it often. We did institute this Saturday only. And as Commissioner Yates and myself have brought up at the last meeting, we want to put that back on the docket to be revisited because we've, we, we both have heard a lot from the citizens that it's just not working. And what does that look like? You know, maybe we don't do every day. Maybe we do Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Maybe we go back to six days a week. You know, but we need to readdress that because it is hard. There's a lot of families who, I know one family in particular who, the one parent works all weekend, the other parent's having to take care of the children, and they don't have time to run over to, to the landfill to dump just on Saturday. So we need to make concessions. And we do right now. If, if folks are out there and you want to go on any other day than Saturday, just call and present your case and say, hey, I can only come out there on a Wednesday. You know, they're trying to work with you. But we're trying to work to make some changes because, you know, it's all things that happen in government. Sometimes you learn and you try to go back and fix and make things better. And with all the fees that we have to charge, a lot of it is, is areas where they don't get a lot of tax dollars. And we're trying to, to push the fee, we're trying to have the fees on those people who are using those services and not burden every taxpayer with everything that we've got going on. And we're still not doing enough in some areas and getting enough funding to our health department and other areas that we needed and like the planning and inspections and things.
Mr. Keller.
You know, the pandemic has put us in a situation where the tax revenue's not going to be quite as lucrative as it has been in the past from the shutdown. And that's been a real issue. So before we start getting the cart before the horse, you need to think about, you may not have near as much money to spend as you thought you were going to. So you better be addressing the situations of what are we going to do with the budget shortfall from it. I know that with property selling the way it is, those valuations are going to go up. There's probably, a lot of people in the county don't realize that of the, of the, of the funds that are spent that the county commissioners vote on, I think it's somewhere around 59% of all tax dollars come from property taxes. It doesn't come from green box fees or sales tax or anything else. Sales tax is only around 22 or 23% of that. So the more of those fees and the more you increase those property taxes, the more burden you're putting on the people who own the property in the county. So we need to be taking a look at, at trying to, to lessen that a little bit and let the people who are coming in to enjoy our county, as in visitors, people who are coming for the weekend and whatever else, look to let them help pay for some of the services that all the property owners are footing the majority of the bill for. So I know there's a lot of small issues that's in there, but we're going to have to pay real close attention to what we're going to do with what little money we're going to have over the next couple of years because it's going to take a lot of time to recover from this.
We've got two more questions for you before your final comments. And these will both center around the school system, one of the most marketable assets for us in terms of economic development, some of the, the points that you all have touched on in your own ways tonight. With in-person learning set to resume across Watauga County schools next week, what role should the Board of Commissioners play in funding school safety-related priorities that may have fallen on the back burner a bit in our own minds because of all we've been dealing with, with COVID? Mr. Castle, we will start with you.
Well, I'm excited that, that we're going to resume in school learning. Have several friends who are schoolteachers and they've, they've been missing that experience, that face-to-face interaction with kids. And the kids, I think, who'd have ever thought kids would be ready to go back to school? But they are ready to go back to school. And I'm excited for that. Of course, the school board is kind of, this is their bailiwick and, and that's why, why we have a school board. The county commissioners can support the schools with making sure that they have the funding to, to operate, to resume. I know there's going to probably be extra steps with cleaning and some folks that they may have to bring in temporarily to clean and work evenings. And I think we need to make sure that we've still got our resource officers there, that they are there to protect the kids. And I'm excited for the teachers because I know that this is, this is why teachers teach, because they want to be in class with kids. The commissioners just need to make sure that we can support their needs as far as infrastructure goes. I know some of those buildings may have begun to, to experience some problems, maybe some leaks or some other things. So obviously, the county needs to make available funds to fix anything that crops up from being shut down for so long.
Chairman Welch.
Well, school safety is definitely taking on a whole new place in, in our lives right now, especially with everybody, well, K through three, going back next week, my son included. But over the years, last couple of years, we have taken school safety pretty seriously and, and in working with the, the school board and providing funding for them, we, we gave almost $800,000 to improve the actual facilities, the heart, like, you know, the double vestibule entries, the entry systems in place, lockable systems that everybody checks into if you've ever been to a school here, that, that will impact all of the schools, that has already impacted all the schools. So it is roughly about $800,000 to start off with. We've expanded the number of SROs, nurses, counselors that are in each school to provide the, the law enforcement and, and, and community support that a lot of our students need. We've also diverted some of the CARES Act funding from the federal government that was earmarked for COVID relief, basically, to the school system, to be able to provide the lunches that they did to all the schools, to, to the kids at the beginning of the shutdown. So I think we, we've got a pretty good track record of not only expanding the, the facility improvements, but also the support staff improvements as well. And one thing that we hope that, that we can get to is paying these teachers a livable wage through the, the local supplement.
Mr. Wallen.
And I'll echo what Chairman Welch just said. We have, I was very excited that we were able to send a lot of the COVID relief fund. You know, we were able to distribute it to the school systems for all they were able to do, from the nutrition meal. And they were, it's actually helped them with, on the technology side, to, to be able to do some more things for the children, to get the materials that they need. You know, we, we've done a lot upfront to try to help. And I, one thing that also has been huge is Jen Green and our emergency management staff, they've all been working with the school systems, Dr. Elliott, the school board, to get whatever they need and to help, you know, get over any roadblocks that are there, to get any PPE materials that we might need for the, for the school system. And I've been very disappointed in what the state actually provided. I hate that they did not provide enough for our school systems to, to be able to sustain and to move forward. And, and I think that's an area that we need to focus on, is to push the state to give us more so that we can help get the schools where they need to be. Because it is a critical need. It's a critical need to make sure that our children are safe. My daughter is just absolutely through the roof that she gets to go back to school because she misses the interaction with, with the children. And, you know, she's just counting down the days that she gets to go back and be in person. And, and I know that the, the teachers miss the interaction with the kids as well. And so, you know, we've been trying to do everything we can. And as Chairman Welch said, over the last few years, we've been trying to make sure that the schools are safer and trying to make sure the double entry doors and things like that. And the SROs we've added. And we're, we're always trying to be giving all the funding we can. Chairman Welch and I both sit on the advisory committee for the school systems. And we take that very seriously, working with the school board and working with Dr. Elliott to make sure that he can communicate to us what we need.
Mr. Keller.
My kids are 17 and 15. My daughter Macy's a senior at Watauga High School. And just like the others have spoken, they're, they're excited about getting back to school and they can't wait for it. And I know there are some, some families who may be hesitant about their kid and get back in the situation of being in close proximity to others. And COVID has, has stricken a real fear in people. I, I was at a doctor's appointment in Winston on Tuesday this week, and I saw something I hadn't seen anywhere else before. And I thought, man, that'd be great in the school system. These, these were these small fans, probably three foot by four foot, and they had these HIPAA filtration systems on them. And they're scattered out on the floor, so they were circulating the air around. And every one of them is changed out every so many hours. But I'm sure there's other systems out there. And I thought from the get-go on this, that, that our schools need to take a look at the HVAC system and see if there's not a way to, to do the same situation, have more locations of filtering areas that moves around the school, and then put some of the portable ones in. of the portable ones in until we get through the, the push of, of, of this, the COVID situation so that the, the kids can feel safer about getting air. If they rise, the air's being purified more and it's not a stale. I remember being in school when I was in elementary school and at the old Watauga High School, and that air just felt like it was just stagnant all the time. You know, it was old dry air and, and anything. But I know the newer schools, most of them have a, have a different system. But any, excuse me, anything to make it feel fresher and, and a cleaner situation, I'm, I'm all for it in, in the school system.
Ms. Portalian.
So I'm in a, a position with my work where I have the opportunity of speaking with lots of mothers and lots of teachers. And I'm hearing positive and negative equally, people who are very excited about getting back to school and people who are very fearful about going back to school. Some teachers are excelling at doing online teaching. Some are wishing for that classroom experience to come back. I don't think that we are anywhere near through this pandemic. Our COVID numbers are rising in this community. So I think we need to approach this opening of the schools cautiously and that we need to have in place and a time and a space where we can step back and evaluate, okay, how's this working for this K through three group? How, can we move forward with the three, third grade to fifth grade group? When do we bring in the high school students? How are the children and the teachers and the staff following, using PPE and being safe and sanitizing our schools? It's going to be a challenge. I think that many children are looking forward to it. I think that some parents are hesitant. I think some teachers are hesitant. But I think with the support of the county commission and the school board and all the people that are here trying to support these kids in the schools and trying to come to a more normalcy way of teaching and learning is important, but that we really do need to be careful and take this step-by-step and fall back and look and see how we're progressing and what we need to do to make the next step better.
All right, we have one last question. We'll have Chairman Welch start it off for us. Part of the tax increase that coincided with the long, with the construction of the Watauga County Recreation Center was to, to be a set aside for long-range school facility improvements. In anticipation of revenue shortfalls related to COVID, that budget allocation was among the, the first cut from the current budget. What's the best plan to get back to saving for future school facility needs? And what should those priorities be?
Well, part, part of that increase was also improving emergency communications as well. So there were three large pieces that, that we, we had included in that. And in, in the allocation to the school system, we've always put aside about $1.5 million each year to go into the fund for long and short-range facility improvements. So that, that's remained the, the same. As far as our budget with the county this year, not knowing what the impact of this pandemic was going to have on county revenues, we went ahead and took out a little over $6 million out of our, our budget, mostly of county facilities. And, and that doesn't really touch the school systems allocation. It's more like if we needed another roof on, on the courthouse or, you know, is county-related buildings. And, and unfortunately, even in the, the first economic downturn in 2008 or, and, and on, and, and this, it's usually the capital projects that are the first ones to take the hit and just be put on pause. So we have maintained that, that funding to the school system for these long-range capital projects that we feel is, is a priority for the county, a priority for the school system, a priority for our community because a lot of these schools act as smaller community centers throughout the, the areas. And so we've maintained that funding for the school system this year at 1.5 million. And, and we look forward to doing it more because when I was on the school board, we had a long-range facility plan that was basically shelved and then thrown away because of the economic downturn. And we want to make sure that we don't have that within 10 years of, twice in, in 10 years of, that, that we can address these issues.
Mr. Wallen.
I concur with what Chairman Welch has just pointed out. We have, we have really tried to look and make sure that the school system has what they need. And we are setting aside money. And this was a little bit of extra money that we had to just hold back for right now, but it is definitely going right back because we've already gotten estimates on how we can spend the first allocation of money that's already come in. And it's already more than what was originally anticipated in just two years. I mean, the study was done just two years ago of the infrastructure needed at all the other schools, taking Valley Crusus out of the equation. And, you know, we've already seen that, okay, we, you know, we've got to make sure that we keep funding this because we've got to make sure there's money there so that we can keep taking care of these infrastructure needs. Again, we can't go backwards like we did for about eight years and just put our head in the sand and think, well, we're just not going to fix anything. And now we're stuck with this problem that we're having to figure out how to fund. And that's what we've had to do over the last two tax increases that have had to come about is because we, we needed money to help fund and get the school systems and the environment our children are learning in back to where it should have been and where it should have been maintained. And it seems like what we've done in the past years before the last four or five is just kick the can down the road. And kicking the can down the road has gotten us nowhere. We can't keep doing that. And we've got to make sure that any money that we can, we can put into these building funds and that we restore the money that was supposed to have been used to put it back in there. And we will, we're going to do that. We just wanted to make sure that we had enough. And we talked to the school board and the school system to make sure that they understood and that we're all on the same page. And we just want to make sure that we're doing what's right for them and for this county.
Mr. Keller.
I think the county's going to have to prioritize how they're spending the, the funds a little, a little more fiscally responsible. You know, we're, we're saddled with a huge debt with Community Rec Center that's not even open and able to bring any revenue yet, which is to no fault of the commissioners, you know, who would have thought the pandemic come in. But, you know, that, that put a big, a big burden on the budget. And I know it's something that, that's great for community, is going to be good down the road, but it, it might have been, it might have been better to have set back a certain amount of money first before you went and borrowed that much. But you're going to have to start being fiscally responsible for what, what few tax dollars are coming in because it, it's going to take a hit for a little while. I mean, there's no question the sales tax is going to be way down. And then the other small percentage of other revenues that come in is going to be down too. So there's going to have to be some hard decisions made. There's going to have to be some cuts. It's been, that nobody wants to talk about, but it's going to come. And we're going to have to be ready to, 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 to make those hard decisions and follow through with them and just be fiscally responsible with everything that we do.
Ms. Portalian.
Well, first of all, I'd like to make the statement that in all of this talking that I've heard, I am very impressed with everything that Chairman Welch has talked about and what this county, county commission has done for our community. I think our budget management is fiscally sound right now. And Watauga County, our tax base is solid. If there were budget shortfalls that we are anticipating, then we would need to look at long-range capital projects that could be postponed or pulled back for a later date. I think prioritizing where the money goes, of course, is always a top priority. That's what you do. So I think that the county's in a good place and has good leadership to achieve all these goals.
Mr. Castle.
I've found out that owning and maintaining a house, if you wait 24 years to fix everything at one time, it gets really expensive. Roof and HVAC and flooring and exterior and interior paint, all those things need to be redone. And, and I'm, I'm going to give advice to anybody who's building a house now, fix the little things along the way and don't try to do it all at one time. It's going to be really expensive. I think that's what we ran up against with some of our schools. We put in a, if we put in some HVAC systems, we can control the environment, the air a lot better, opening up windows and having stagnant air. And I know it's not exactly hot in the high country, but we have hot days and we need air-conditioned air year-round. And so you can certainly, we need to invest in these schools. We need to get these schools modernized. And the infrastructure of the schools, we, we volunteered as parents to buy window units for our school at Parkway. And they were like, well, that's a great idea. You can do that, but there's a problem. What's the problem? They said, our electrical system won't handle the load of the air conditioners. So, you know, then, well, okay, well, we need, and we need to add some, some service to the, to the electrical system. So I, I think we do need to prioritize putting some money into these schools and getting them modernized and up to par. We've got a top-notch community and a top-notch place to live. We need schools to match it.
All right, we've reached the end of our prepared questions. We'll give you one last moment in the sun here. Two-minute closing comments, starting with Commissioner Welch.
Well, again, thank you to both chambers for putting this event on at TV. My, my friends up here on, at the microphones, I think it's been a, a great night. And, and Watauga County residents should be excited to hear that, that, that we're basically on the same page on a lot of things and that we, we definitely have a, a bright future ahead of us. I, I guess I'm the old head on this, on this panel up here, and, and I've got a 10-year record that I'm really proud of. And two years on the school board, eight years on the county commission. And, and the things that we've done over the last few years, me as chairman, honestly, it wasn't me. It was, it was the entire board. I'm only one of five votes, so I can't do anything by myself. So I really appreciate my, my colleagues on the, on the county commission, Republican and Democrat. We've, we've had a lot of bipartisanship throughout the years, and I'm really proud of our last few budgets have been all approved unanimously. And, and so we've done a lot of great things up here. We're, we're getting our schools back in, in line on capital projects. We're expanding public safety, infrastructure, emergency communications. We're improving public health allocations that, as we have found out, is, is, is needed. But the best thing about this, we, we've added a new rec center that I guarantee you is going to be a, a game changer up here as far as economic development goes. But one thing that I'm really proud of is, is the fact that we, as a board, have come together despite party to get some really good things done. And the best thing about this is even though we're in the middle of a pandemic, financially, this county is solid and it, it has the highest credit rating it's ever had. And so we're really proud of what we've done. I'm really proud of what we've done. And, and honestly, it's not really us on the county commission. It's, it's our county manager, it's our staff that, that really do a lot of the work for us and make us look really good. So if you have any questions, john.welch@wataugov.org. I can't even remember that usually. So looking forward to hearing from some folks.
Mr. Wallen.
I just want to echo the thanks to everyone who put this on, from the Boone Chamber to the Blonrook Chamber, to WATA being here, to AppTV for putting it on. And I don't want to forget the App Theater. It was so nice to be able to open this facility up and get to use it. It's, it's a beautiful facility, and I can't wait till we can get to have more programming in here because it's, it's a, it's a great place to be. And so, you know, I just want to thank everyone who was here. Ms. Royster, who was here doing our timekeeper as well, I don't want to forget her. She's done well, sending us those, those signals. I didn't know whether to steal third or to, or to, you know, the squeeze was on. I was, you know, but it, it's been good. And it's been a great night to have. And it's been great for all the folks in the high country to be able to tune in if they wanted to and to, to be able to watch what's going on since they can't be here in person. And I, I just think this is incredible, an incredible night. And I just thank everyone for being able to put it on. I've been on the commission for two years, and I love it. It's, it is, I'm so passionate about this county and what we can do. And I feel like we can do so much more. As Chairman Welch said, we've got this county moving forward right now, and I want to see us have that. And I want to see us continue moving forward. And I don't believe this is the time where we need to be, to be reloading because there, there, there's a learning curve to being on this commission. And, you know, it takes, it takes a little bit to get into a groove and start moving and being able to make a difference. And I feel like that, that I'm really hitting the ground running. And I don't think you'll find anybody who has come into contact with me or any committee I serve on or anything disparaging that'll be said about the effort that I try to put in each and every day to this county and the effort I try to do to make this county a better place for all of our citizens everywhere, from one end of this county to the other, no matter where you are and what end, or whether it's over in Peoria or all the way down into Stony Fork. I mean, it's, it covers this whole county. And I, and I just love what I've been able to do, and I want to be able to continue to do it. And I ask that you please vote for me. And I ask that you please reach out anytime. People will tell you, it don't matter if it's a Sunday afternoon at 2:00, I'll answer my phone and listen to anything you have to say. And my, my email address is charlie.wallen@wataugov.org. As John said, that's a mouthful to get out, and sometimes I struggle with it as well. So please just always reach out and know that I, that this is where I want to be. And this is what I want to continue to do, serving the high country and Watauga County.
Mr. Keller.
It's been a real eye-opener, running for a county commissioner, from all the stuff it takes to the details of a campaign. The general people don't have a clue what all it takes to even fill out the paperwork to sign as a candidate for this and the timeframes and the dates you've got to hit and all those things. So that, that's something that was, it's been, been a real learning experience for me. And I look forward to learning even more things about this county. I've, I don't consider myself a politician. I never will be a politician. I'm going to be out here as someone that is going to serve all of our citizens in the county for, from top to bottom. There's, there's no prioritizing. It doesn't matter to me, Democrat, independent, Republican, whatever. I'm here to help everyone for the betterment of this county. And I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to, to serve. I'd appreciate your vote, and I want to encourage everyone to get out and vote. It's an important, important thing for you to, to exercise your civic duties to, to go out and, and vote. So thanks for the opportunity, guys. Appreciate it.
Ms. Portalian.
Well, first of all, I also would like to thank the Boone area and the Blonrook Chambers of Commerce, all of you guys that are surrounding us here in the background where you can't see. They're doing such a great job in making this possible for us. And thank you to the members of the community who submitted your questions, your concerns. I believe that everyone here tonight is committed to serving our community to the best of their abilities. Each candidate here has chosen to run because they care about you, about our county and our state. And I encourage you to vote for the candidates that you feel will best represent you, your concerns, and your community. Most importantly, I encourage everyone to vote early, like Charlie said, especially first-time voters. Many of you have already voted by mail, and I appreciate those of you who have already voted for me. But be prepared on Election Day. Know the polling sites for your precincts. Some of these have changed. Wear a mask, social distance, bring a snack, bring some water in case you have to wait in line. My campaign is focused on these three areas that we've spoken of highly tonight, families, safety, security, health, well-being, affordable workforce, housing, childcare, senior care, education. Number two, our schools need upgrading. We need fair teacher compensation and increased broadband across the county. Sustainability, thoughtful, long-range growth and development, support for our rural communities, our farms and locally-owned businesses, renewable energy, protecting our natural resources and our heritage for future generations. I'd like to thank everyone for considering me to be one of your county commissioners. Please feel free to reach out to me at Carringtonforwatauga@gmail.com with any questions or concerns that you may not have been addressed tonight. I'm asking you for your vote. I don't claim to know everything, not yet, but I do promise to listen, to learn, to research all available options, offer suggestions, ideas, collaborate, and work together as a county commission to represent you the best that I can. Thank you.
Mr. Castle.
I do want to echo thanks again to you, the chambers, Blonrook and Boone, and, and the guys behind the scenes. That's where I am more comfortable, back there behind the scenes, where I'm, this, seeing this theater restored is, 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 is really cool. I went on my first date with my wife up there in that balcony, so brings back a lot of memories. And so this is a beautiful place, and I hope we get to come and see it soon in person. I feel like I've been on a job interview for eight years because I've been a, on the planning board. I was appointed by Perry Yates. I'm not sure if I was the only one that said yes, or, you know, if I was just his bottom of the barrel. We actually had a discussion as to who would run back then, and it was determined that he had more experience and I was, had younger kids. And so I couldn't prioritize myself then to run. And so the planning board has been a great experience for me. And we have, we work with, you know, sort of side by side, or at least behind the scenes with county commissioners. They send us things to, to look over and discuss, and then we send them back to them for their consideration. So our planning board is, of course, it's nonpartisan, and so nothing like that ever comes up. And it's been nice to work with those folks. There's been some amazing people, some very intelligent, smart people on that planning board. And I will echo that our staff at Watauga County is amazing. Joe Furman and his crew are really great to work with. So I feel like that experience with the planning board has prepared me for the next step of county commissioner, and I would certainly appreciate everyone's vote. Thank you.
And we thank you, the candidates who are participating in tonight's forum. Good luck to all of you.